Quorum of the board. So I'd like to get going. So I'd like to call the, to order the, the school board meeting for February ninth, twenty twenty one. Where did I go with my agenda? Sorry, folks, I'm just, I got a lot of different windows open here. To go. Alright, so we're not, we're not going to be taking public input tonight on this particular agenda will be, have plenty of opportunity here from the public at, at the public hearing. The other items are, I'm really not going to entertain any agenda adjustments this evening. We have a very specific things we have to do in a very structured way to take positions on these articles. What I would ask is Tammy is going to read our, the article. She will motion it on the floor. Amy will second it. Then I will ask for any debate or anything and then I'll call the vote. Would take your positions, you vote your conscience on every one of these items as you, as you will. And then we'll move right to the next one and hopefully we'll get through all of these articles and be ready in time for my, for, for, for the public hearing. Sound good?
Yep.
Alright, so with that, why don't we get right into it for some reason?
First, we have to do our statements of.
Yeah, please do.
So, Tammy Fareed, I am participating electronically from home because attending in person would not be reasonably practical due to COVID nineteen. I'm alone in the room and I can hear the proceedings.
Amy Kellner, I'm participating remotely from home because of COVID nineteen. I can hear the proceedings and I'm alone in the room.
Carol?
Carol Ro, participating from home due to COVID nineteen month nineteen. I'm alone in the room and I can hear the proceedings.
And Brooke?
Yes, Brooke Arthur, I'm participating remotely from home due to COVID nineteen. I'm alone in the room and I can hear the proceedings. Can you hear me? It looks like I'm delayed.
It's.
You're a little wobbly.
Okay, if it becomes ineffective, I can, I guess, call into my phone.
Yeah. Okay, so Rob Mann here, I'm calling in due to COVID nineteen issues. I'm in my office alone and I can hear the meeting and, and the proceedings going forward. With that, I'd like to move right to our deliberation section to see what actions the board will take regarding positions on the warrant articles. We will read each one. Tammy will read. She will motion. Amy will second it. We have an opportunity to discuss that motion. And then at that point, I will call the vote by roll call and I will just follow a standard progression here. I'll, I'll call Tammy first, Amy, Carol and Brooke. And then I will call myself. Alright, just, I just want to make sure that's a, an order that, you know, just so keeps, keeps things moving smoothly. Okay, with that, let's get the, let's get the articles rolling, Tammy.
I move to see if the school district will vote to approve the cost items included in the three-year collective bargaining agreement reached between the Hollis School Board and the Hollis Education Support Staff Association for the two twenty twenty one, twenty-two school year, which calls for the following increases in support staff salaries and benefits at the current staffing levels. Fiscal year twenty-one, excuse me, fiscal year twenty twenty-one dash twenty-two estimated increase fifty-five thousand thirty-four dollars. And further to raise and appropriate the sum of fifty-five thousand thirty-four dollars for the fiscal year. Such sum representing the negotiated increase over the twenty twenty twenty-one salaries and fringe benefits.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none. You can say something to look like you were going to say something, Tammy.
Never mind, I'm good.
And Amy, you're good. Okay, so with that, I'll call by roll call. Tammy Fareed.
Tammy, I.
Amy Kellner.
Amy, I.
Carol Roy.
You're muted.
Carol Roy, I.
Brooke Arthur.
Brooke, I.
Rob Mann, I. Can, Amy, could I ask you also to just keep track of the vote for each one? Because we're likely to be asked that in the, in the public meeting.
Hey.
Could I request that Brooke do that since she's our secretary?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, sure. Thanks.
Amy, I'm sorry, I. We're about authority because I worry that in the event of a, of a challenge that, that the officer responsible.
Yeah, I, I think that makes sense.
I don't mean to be rude, I just worry about the consequences, so.
Okay, very well.
Thank you.
Next article, please.
I move Article Two, shall the school district vote to raise and appropriate the sum of five hundred ninety-four thousand one hundred twenty-two dollars as the Hollis School District's portion of the SAU budget of one million nine hundred fifty-three thousand two hundred fifty-seven dollars for the forthcoming fiscal year. This year's adjusted budget of one million nine hundred twenty-two thousand eight hundred sixty-four dollars with five hundred eighty-four thousand eight hundred seventy-seven dollars assigned to the school budget of the school district will be adopted if the article does not receive a majority vote of all the school district voters voting in this school administrative unit.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none by roll call, Tammy Fareed.
Tammy, I.
Amy Kellner.
Amy, I.
Carol Roy.
Carol Roy, I.
Brooke Arthur.
Brooke Arthur, I.
Rob Mann, I.
I move Article Three to see if the school district will vote to raise and appropriate up to the sum of twenty-three thousand nine hundred seventy dollars to be added to the previously established maintenance fund for administrative and associated structures at Foreign Lund Lane in Hollis, map fifty-six, lot two. This amount to come from the unassigned fund balance available for transfer on July first of this year. This amount represents rental proceeds and unexpended maintenance funds to be received from SAU forty-one.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, I'll call the vote. Emmy, Tammy Fareed.
Tammy, I.
Amy Kellner.
Amy, I.
Carol Roy.
Carol Roy, I.
Brooke Arthur.
Brooke Arthur, I.
Rob Mann, I.
I move Article Four to see if the school district will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred twenty thousand dollars to be added to the previously established school buildings maintenance fund from the Hollis School District's June thirty, twenty twenty-one unassigned fund balance available for transfer on July one, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, I'll call the vote by roll call, Tammy Fareed.
Tammy, I.
Amy Kellner.
Amy, I.
Carol Roy.
Carol Roy, I.
Brooke Arthur. Rob Mann, I.
I move Article Five to see if the school district will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty-five thousand dollars to be added to the previously established special education expendable trust fund. The sum to come from the Hollis School District's June thirty, twenty twenty-one unassigned fund balance available for transfer on July one, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Discussion.
I have a question or a concern or a comment.
Yep.
Every year when we, in the past two years when we've done this article, I think this is our third round, I believe. It makes me so anxious that it's such a small number and I'd like to ask Andy for the last time before we have a chance to amend it. Is this enough?
I think that we continue to grow it, Tammy. It is enough because Hollis is fortunate enough to have a contingency fund as well as an unassigned fund balance that is available if something should come up. We all know that one child can be very expensive, but I think this slow methodical method has got us into a very good place in the co-op in Brookline and Hollis is quickly getting there as well.
Thank you. You remind me of that every time and I appreciate your being patient with my concern. Thank you.
That kind of precipitates a question from me. What, what is the current balance for that? Expendable trust? Do we know?
I believe it's a hundred thousand right now.
And we're adding twenty-five.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I lied, fifty thousand.
Just fifty thousand. So upon passage, we should be at seventy-five.
Um, yes.
Could you also remind us for the record how that money could be accessed? What's the process?
It would have to be a public hearing, but you also have to make sure that you're being discreet about what we're asking for.
You mean with respect to student privacy?
Yes.
But it just in, in the sense, I mean, because Rob asked for the balance and we can't, you can't spend from it unless you ask us and we ask the public first.
Correct.
Okay, very good.
Yeah, no, those are good clarifying questions. Any other questions or comments on Article Five? Seeing none, I'll call the vote by roll call, Tammy Fareed.
I.
Amy Kellner.
I.
Carol Roy.
Carol Roy, I.
Brooke Arthur. Rob Mann. Gotcha. Article Six.
I move Article Six to see if the school district will vote to establish a contingency fund for the current year for unanticipated expenses that may arise and further to raise and appropriate a sum of ninety-five thousand dollars to go into the fund. The sum to be raised by taxation. Any appropriation left in the fund at the end of the year will lapse to the general fund.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none by roll call, Tammy Fareed. Amy Kellner.
Amy, I.
Carol Roy.
Carol Roy, I.
Brooke Arthur.
Brooke, I.
Rob Mann, I. Article Seven.
I move Article Seven, shall the school district accept the provisions of RSA one ninety-eight colon twenty dash B? Providing that any school district at an annual meeting may adopt an article authorizing indefinitely until specific rescission of such authority. The school board to apply for, accept and expend without further action by the school district unanticipated money from a state, federal or other government unit or a private source which becomes available during the fiscal year.
Second.
Discussion. So.
Did we skip an article?
Article Six was the contingency fund ninety-five thousand. Article Five was twenty-five thousand for the sped, special ed.
And then you just read the thing about the accept and expend future revenues?
No, I just read Article Seven, which is one, one of them, and Article Eight is if Article Seven doesn't pass.
Okay. I'm following along on the slides that they are going to present for our Budcom portion and they're not the same.
That's important. Let's see, I didn't compare them.
That, that's important because I, we're going, I'm reading it right off the warrant.
You're right, there it is. You're right, they've got them in wrong order.
So they'll need to, we'll need to bring that to Tom's attention.
So what order are, so the order we have on our outline for tonight is correct? The presentation slides are incorrect, is that?
That's the way I'm going because we're, I'm reading this right out of our, the warrant itself that's in our packet.
Right.
Part of our agenda. So when in doubt, I'm referring to this document. Not a presentation.
So yeah, we need to say that right off the bat.
Yeah, good call. So the other item I, I would say about this is this article has been kind of rewritten a little bit than what we've seen in the past. But you know, maybe Andy or Gina, you can confirm that. It's, what I'm used to seeing is, you know, being able to access funds for special education needs and things like that was always worded slightly differently. And I guess they refashioned the language for this.
We'll see, Rob, is Article Seven is new language approved by legal counsel to give the board much more flexibility?
Yep.
If this doesn't pass, it has, you're, you're going to hear in a moment, Tammy, you'll read Article Eight, which is the old language.
I see.
We're just trying to progress to new language that gives the board more flexibility and legal counsel has recommended.
Okay.
And, and let me just also add that Tom had me doing some research on Article Eight, which we haven't got to yet. And Jim O'Shaughnessy has said that we really don't need that article. So I anticipate that Tom will suggest that we just drop Article Eight altogether. But you guys can choose to do it, do whatever you'd like to do.
So Kelly, if Article Seven were to fail to pass, would not pass, would we still not need Article Eight? Is that what you're saying?
That is correct. Jim O'Shaughnessy said because the RSA that is, it's referenced in Article Eight but not said is, is an RSA and we don't need to have a warrant article to be able to access that money because of the RSA.
Good, one last thing, good.
Oh, so the article is not superseding the art, the article isn't superseding the RSA. If the RSA says we can access it, then we're okay.
Correct.
Okay, yes, Brooke, go ahead.
First, can you hear me? Otherwise I could type question in chat. Okay, do we have any policy in place around governing what types of private sources we can accept money from?
Yes, we do, Brooke, and every piece like that has to be brought to the board and it's the board's decision to decide if they want to accept money from any organization. It's just as allowed us to bring it to the board.
Okay, but we, there isn't already policy in place that guides us as to which types of private organizations we shall or shall not accept money from.
I don't think that's, I don't think that would necessarily be needed in an warrant article. I think you could build that into policy or that, that can be work that the board oversees, but I'll defer to Andy or any other of the subject matter experts.
The policy just identifies at a certain dollar amount, you must bring it to the board. And then the board at that time, the sitting board would make the decision as to whether or not you wanted to accept the funds. I did want to identify, I don't know, Rob, if you can see that the moderator has had his hand up, so I didn't know if he wanted to.
Oh, yeah, sure. Yeah, Drew, go ahead.
I just wanted to, to make the point somewhat subsidiary that you can reorder the articles after the public hearing anytime up until warrant is posted. So you can, you can shuffle them and move them all around as, as you see fit.
Okay, good to know. Thank you.
After kind of doing a comparison, it, it just appears that instead of it being also like an Article Six supporting slide, he marked his Article Seven, which made seven, eight, and there we go forward. So it may just be that, that one. I'm just kind of trying to do a compare contrast over here, but thank you for the, the note, Drew.
Any other questions or comments on Article Seven?
I would like to answer Brooke's comment question really quick. While you guys have been talking, I've been looking through our policy manual online. There is a policy KC like cat, D like dog, public gift donations that has language in it about all gifts and contributions made become the property of Hollis. It, it covers some of, some of Brooke's question. But it's really not, doesn't look like it has any restrictions of what kind of, of donations that we can and can't accept. And again, I think if I understood the policy we're working on right now correctly, the policy we're working on right now gives the board year-long the right to accept, to, to have donations brought to us by the staff. We don't have to bring it back to the public. Is that correct, Andy? Yeah.
Anything? Anything else on Article Seven? Seeing none by roll call, Tammy Fareed.
I.
Amy Kellner.
Amy, I.
Carol Roy.
Carol Roy, I.
Brooke Arthur.
Brooke, I.
Rob Mann, I. Article Eight.
I move Article Eight if, which is contingent article. If Article Seven passes, this article is unnecessary. The article reads, "To see if the school district voters will authorize the Hollis School District to access future year state and federal special education aid funds in the event that special education costs exceed budget limitations."
Second.
Discussion. So the only thing I'm thinking of is this, if we go into the public hearing and we get into a conversation that this is not needed or whatever, and we're asked to dispense with this or, or do something with Article Eight, is, is that the appropriate place and time to do it? Or can we just leave it? I don't want to do something that may put the board into a awkward position or maybe we didn't handle the article right or disposition it right.
Drop an article from the warrant other than petition articles anytime up until when it's posted.
Okay.
It shouldn't cause any problems. We can have an open discussion with the budget committee and it both to decide that what we call Article Eight is out, that can be done then and then we would just move forward from there.
All right, I would just like to ask while we're in discussion on this article, although legal said we don't need it, we could get rid of it. Is there any concerns from administration or board members if we dispense with Article Eight during the course of this evening and get rid of it? Is there any concerns at this point?
Is there any harm in keeping it?
No, there's no harm in keeping it, but just to Jim O'Shaughnessy's point, legal counsel, because it's covered under the RSA, we have to obey it anyways.
So the, the vote against it would not carry. The RSA requires us to do this work anyway. Or allows us, I'm sorry, allows us to accept funds regardless of whether the town were to vote against it at district meeting.
Yes, so I probably should have asked this under Articles, Article Seven, but then doesn't that make Article Seven superfluous as well? No?
No.
Okay. I'm satisfied. Any, any other questions or concerns on Article Eight?
I, I do have a question. Has Brookline Co-op, do they still have, what is our Article Eight here? And, and this year's warrant?
They do, but that's only because I didn't know this when they had their public hearing, but to this point, they haven't posted it yet, so they could drop it tomorrow if they wanted to.
So I, I'm, I'm hearing Rob's point and, you know, I'm one that likes, that I was always felt since, like, before I was on the board and felt things were happening in the work that the previous school boards were doing that I just didn't understand went over my head and it made me feel uncomfortable, not mistrustful, just uncomfortable. And I do feel like it's, it's on the draft. Maybe it's valuable to illustrate to the public that there are RSAs that govern even this kind of minutia and we're subject to them. It's, it's, you know, that things aren't hidden, they just operate by law. So we could keep it and then explain to the public, this is the last year we'll have this article because the law, the RSA covers it if, if people prefer that.
My recommendation would be to take your position on this, have a discussion with Budcom and then you could always, up until the articles are posted, decide to drop it. So you don't have to make a decision tonight.
Yeah, it's still, it's still transparent because the article isn't yet. So we're still fashioning it for the public. So if we needed to make a change with Article Eight or not, this is the appropriate time to do it and then we post it and then bang, there's, there's your warrant. So, and, and, yeah, go.
Well, so we said on Article Seven, right? I got it. So our Article Eight is the, if Article Seven doesn't pass, why would we not want that contingent article? If the RSA is telling us we can accept money, the other one is saying we can dip into next year's money. They're not talking necessarily about the same, same thing. The RSA says you can take it, but it doesn't say from where.
Carol, what do you mean next year's money?
Well, isn't that say? It says future state and federal special education aid and funds.
Well, we can't dip into next year, it's not authorizing.
Sorry, I used the wrong word, but I'm saying, it says it in the article, future year state and federal special education funds. That's different than applying for something that's happening right now under the RSA that's in Article Seven.
My recommendation would be just, Carol, that when Article Seven talks about state and federal, it gives us the ability to take any state and federal. So special ed, regular ed, all of that is covered under state and federal. Article Eight used to be the old language where you had to ask for permission, but now because of new laws that have come out, Article Eight is governed by RSA and is no longer needed.
Thank you. That makes sense, thank you.
And now that Carol has said that, and I'm looking at the language, I, I confess, I'm looking at the outline, not at the authentic document. I don't see the future, the word future in the language I just read and can, can we reconcile that?
It is, it should have the word future, yes.
Then I don't know that I made the correct motion.
Are you reading from the outline that was provided?
Yes.
It's there.
Article Seven.
Article Eight. If Article Seven passes, this article's.
Are you talking about Article Seven having future? I'm sorry.
No, I'm saying if, if Article Seven says you can take money, Article Eight is saying future year, so I wanted to reconcile why where that money can be from, but Andy made the point.
Okay, thank you. I thought you were seeing the word future in Article Seven, that's, I got mixed up.
That's all right, thank you.
Are we all good on Article Eight? Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none by roll call, Tammy Fareed.
I.
Amy Kellner.
I.
Carol Roy.
Carol Roy, I.
Brooke Arthur.
Brooke Arthur, I.
And Rob Mann, I. Article Nine.
I move Article Nine to see if the school district will vote to raise and appropriate a sum of thirteen million eight hundred twenty-six thousand three hundred sixty-eight dollars for the support of schools, for the payment of salaries for the school district officials and agents and for the payment of statutory obligations of the district. This appropriation does not include appropriations voted in other warrant articles.
Second.
Discussion.
That, if I understood the number Tammy read, it's different than one on the slide, on, on Tom's slide by three hundred dollars.
Thirteen eight two six, thirteen eight two one. No, it's more. So that, what I just read is thirteen million eight hundred twenty-six thousand three hundred sixty-eight and the slide says eight two one oh six eight.
That's very weird, because.
Five thousand three hundred dollar difference.
They used to match, hmm.
Again, I'm reading off of Dawn's outline that she supplies to help us with the motions, so.
One is the same as yours.
Eight two, eight two six, three six eight is the correct number.
Six, three, six, eight is the correct number. That's the number I read in the motion.
And that shows up not only in our outline, but in our packet version of the warrant.
Okay, so there's a typographical error in the slide.
Yep, I can bring these forth when we start talking with them, the two issues.
Would someone note that?
I already did.
Thank you.
That would be Carol for sure.
Well, we know that a lot of work has been done on, on this, this budget and, you know, we've gone through many rounds, the, the processes I think work really well and allowed not only board members, but also the community to kind of go on the journey, not only to see the process, but the, the, the thought process behind the rounds, what we add in, what we've taken away and also been able to publicly work with the budget committee on the guidance, guidance relief requests, things like that. So again, this is a process that we've built over many years and I think it's really been working quite well. So I, I'd like to just, you know, publicly make sure that we're recognizing the administration and, and certainly Andy's efforts to approach the budget the way, the way we have been. And I think it's a really, it's a really. uh, it's a really great testament of the collaboration that we have, not only with the budget committee, but with our staff. Uh, our, our administrators to come together and move together and get, to get a appropriate number that we can stand behind to run the school, so, uh, well done. Any other concerns or comments on Article Nine? Seeing none by roll call. Tammy Fried.
Tammy, I.
Amy Kellner.
Amy, I.
Carol Roy.
Carol Roy, I.
Brooke Arthur.
Brooke, I.
Rob Mann, I. Article Ten.
I move Article Ten to transact any other business which may legally come before said meeting.
Second.
Discussion. So there was one item that I know about that was brought forward by a, our previous moderator. Um, he recently had to, um, step down from the role. Uh, with request of changing the term of the moderator, the district moderator from a one-year term to a three-year term. Um, I, I believe anything, you know, a- a- any kind of business in that area would be appropriate under this, this article. Uh, there's nothing specific within our article as it's structured, uh, tonight. Um, that really addresses that, but I know, um, Andy, we've, we've kind of, uh, reached out to you and, and the administration on that. Um, I was wondering if you, you might be able to comment on that, just from the, for our public record.
Yeah, we, we definitely, um, can review that when we get to that point in the meeting. Uh, we're very fortunate that, uh, Drew has kind of stepped up and using his expertise to help us out. Uh, and we'll look at it in a long-term solution when we get to the annual meeting.
Okay, Drew, what's your feeling on that, just from a subject matter expertise? Um, w- w- what kind of pros and cons are around adding additional years to the term of a moderator? Does it, does it open some concerns or does it alleviate issues?
It, it opens some concerns in my mind. Jim and I have different views on this. Um, at, at this point, uh, as far as I know, no one filed for, for office for this coming year. And, um, Brookline doesn't have a school moderator either, uh, as I understand it. Um, and I view the one year as a way to at least entice somebody to try it.
Yeah, good point.
Um, yeah, if you had somebody in there stable, uh, and who was happy to, to keep doing it for a while, three years makes sense. Um, it's, you know, it's not a, a, an, an office that typically gets a lot of, um, competition. Or, or any, so, um, running every year is not really a big deal.
Right, right. Okay, well, I don't want to complicate issues, um, relating to our articles or anything. But I did want to make sure that, you know, it was represented. It, the, the request did come to us via correspondence, uh, to me specifically. I wanted to give that, um, a little daylight, uh, in this meeting. Uh, I'm not necessarily inclined to champion this and move it forward. If we, I don't want to fix an issue that may not be an issue. Um, so I just wanted to, you know, kind of put it out there as part of the discussion around this article. Um, any further comments or concerns or questions relating to Article Ten?
Um, Carol, where did you get the version you're looking at that is wrong for the presentation slides?
The ones that were sent to the Budcom members in preparation for last night and tonight's public hearings.
Okay, because the one that is posted on the website and that I got from Tom um, has the right numbers as far as I can see.
Okay, well, I will check it to see. Um, I'll, I'll let him know that we just want to make sure that it's correct.
Oh, hold it.
From there.
I did find, I found it. Okay, it, it, everywhere else in the presentation I believe is correct, but that one, where it's Article Nine, I see it now.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, they were sent out to our group on February third.
Right.
That was the latest ones.
I'm probably looking at that slide or that presentation.
Okay, anything else on Article Ten? Seeing none by roll call. Tammy Fried.
I.
Amy Kellner.
Amy, I.
Carol Roy.
Carol Roy, I.
Brooke Arthur.
Brooke Arthur, I.
Rob Mann, I. All right, I think that concludes all our work around the warrant, and it concludes the motions. Now, we do have a six-thirty, uh, adjournment item on the, uh, agenda. I wanted to discuss, should we go into recess and adjourn after the public hearing, which we've done in the past? Um, and the reason why we do this is, is if we receive any material or impactful testimony from the, from the community. As part of the public hearing, it gives the board the option to revisit, readjust, or whatever. I, I think the likelihood of that is very low. Um, but I wa- I wanted, um, maybe to get some input from the board and the administration on that.
I think it would tie our hands if we did need to have a meeting and didn't have it, uh, posted, noticed. That would be a really trying situation. It's just a simple matter to adjourn after the budget committee's joint meeting.
To put that, Rob, I would suggest that we recess because we're all leaving this Zoom link and going to a new Zoom link. And then, uh, just call us to order again once we've established the Budcom, and then we'll formally adjourn at the end of the public hearing.
All right, um, any, any objections to that guidance? Okay, seeing none, then the only agenda adjustment I will kind of put forward is is we have a six-thirty motion to adjourn item on our agenda. We are changing that to, we're moving into recess. And we'll adjourn at some point after the public hearing i- on the other Zoom call. So again, everyone good with that? Any objections to that approach? Very good, that's, well, we won't vote on it, well, that's, um, enough, enough for me. Um, so that's what we'll do, so I will entertain a motion to, uh, go into recess.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none by roll call. Tammy Fried.
I.
Amy Kellner.
I.
Carol Roy.
Carol Roy, I.
Brooke Arthur.
Brooke Arthur, I.
Rob Mann, I, we stand in recess. Um. Carol, if you wouldn't mind, make sure you remind me, we are in recess, and we have to adjourn this meeting at some point this evening.
Sounds good.
Be awesome, and with that, with that, we can pivot over to.